The one I wrote tonight.
Good evening. Thank you for attending the social session of the PCS in school board tonight, February 15th of 2023. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. And pledge of allegiance. Thank you. And I'll give the mic over to our superintendent, Sivit Maitre.
Again, thank you for coming tonight. I have two my right here, Jerry McKibben from McKibben's demographic research. And so he has richly came tonight to help us out with some options, looking at some options for redistricting. Couple of house keying items, we have refreshments over on the side I talked about. This is an informational meeting, it is not something where we're actually going to decide something tonight. We wanted to have you here so that you could do some questions. We could answer some questions for you. And also, we have another part of this meeting that is going to happen at seven o'clock. So we're gonna try to finish this first part by then. When you, when we get the question and answer part, if you would very kindly give your name and address, that would be helpful for what we're doing as far as recording. So I wanted to go in just a little bit to why we're here tonight. The sentence there at the top, making an experience that is equitable for all students. That's how this came to be, or why we started to go down this path, look at potential redistricting options. And I will kind of go through all of these other parts of that, preschool opportunities, consistent curriculum, collaboration, STEM certification, and then rethinking how we're doing our transportation. So all those kind of go together to give us the why. First of all, preschool opportunities, one of the things that we would like to do eventually is free up enough space at every building so that we could have a preschool like that each of the buildings. Besides that, an even loftier dream, which you have, would need to have a preschool and then hopefully some kind of daycare at each of those areas. So that was one of the things that we were thinking about when we talked about redistricting. We are going to be moving two of the classrooms from Jefferson to Menominee next year, and that will do a number of things for us. One is to follow up the next school. It will also reduce transportation time and allow us to extend minutes to those preschoolers. And the more preschoolers that we can get into our different, our four different buildings, the better transition they will have into kindergarten, which is a very important thing. So we want them to be kindergarten ready. So we're doing a lot right now with academics. We are doing a curriculum refresh from K through four. We have a company called Equitable Education Solutions helping with that. And then we also are working on using that curriculum map that they're building and breaking down the standards with another group called Solution Tree. And so the goal is in all four of the elementarys is to be similar. And a good reason for that, let's say if a student actually went to one of the buildings and go to one of the other elementarys, the situation would be very similar in both of those buildings. So it would be a much smoother transition for that student. Another mission that we are undertaking already, we started this year, it's a kind of a three-year process, is to get all of those four elementarys STEM certified. And so we are in the first year of that. And I know that Washington was at one time the project-based learning school, and it is, Washington Discovery. But I wanted to read this from the Department of Ed. This is something that the Department of Ed is really pushing schools to do. Says, "Students are engaged in solving real-world problems using inquiry-based learning, problem-based learning, and engineering design practices, which require critical thinking and collaboration." We would like that for all of our kids, not just for a school. So that's another thing that we have talked about quite a bit. Building K six, we even want to do this at Riverside, have them all STEM certified. And Riverside has been STEM certified in the past, and we'd like that to continue. And then finally, rethinking transportation. Today, most of our 29 lessons go to each of the four elementarys every day. So what that does for us, what hinders us with that is that Washington Discovery, which is the PBL school, actually misses out on about 30 minutes of instruction time each day when you compare them to the other schools, particularly Webster and Menominee, just because the bus routes take it almost impossible for kids to get there on time. And then another huge problem is that we have some kids that are on the bus up to an hour and a half one way each day. And so that also has caused us to take a look at redistricting. So next, Jerry McKibben is going to go through. I think here is Jerry's son. He has been in this business 35 years, and he has been here to Plymouth before. This is Mr. Truvio at Buck. And he's going to explain the work that he's done for us. So I'll turn it over to Jerry.
Thank you, Ben. One thing I want to go over before I go into the options here. Slide in theater. There you go. Okay. Very, very important. Don't let this Rockville, South Carolina school, you don't notice that you've not had a special accent. Former raised from Dejana, Carroll High School, Rockville, San Antonio, State of Walker. Worked for six years in the eighties and nineties. My doctorate, you take immediate graphics. Your education, the son, you're ahead of your life. My wife took a job in Rockville about twenty-something years ago, since I moved with her down there. We've done 150 Indiana school districts in three states around the country. We started working Plymouth 2007, I think it was. My first trip to Plymouth was when I was six years old. My dad was trying to drive southbound, involved in Plymouth, he got lost. Back in thirty, it was still too many involved after much time. First thing I'm gonna do is show the current boundary maps. And that's the first slide. These are your current boundaries for the four schools. And I'll answer the question now, before someone asked it, what idiot drew these boundaries? Well, that was me, the project board. Okay? And there was a method to manage this. The idea was to make Washington a backup school. That would have a lot of out-of-district kids coming into it. So the intention was to have a relatively small service area in Washington, just enough for a base population, and fill the rest of the out-of-district students, and then balance the other ones around to the three elementary schools. It didn't quite turn out that way, you know? For those who read this, I have a body, we have a chart in the show of students living in Menominee right now, but it is in works. A woman manifests, functions now, and this would be an excellent point, not just an example, for all this. Really the big push right now to have equity ability for resources, programs, services, and equal in all of the school district elementarys. We're doing many, many redistricting right now. That's really the key theme, equal on all aspects of resources, teacher, classroom sizes, different, you know, programs, education to be. So the manifest function here is basically to repopulate Washington, give it the same size of number of students as it was, and make them all roughly the same size. From our calculations, we could build a path, that means each building should be roughly running at about seventy percent of the design capacity, so it's having to be due. So we have two options here. And now, the full two options, that probably is not gun duty, led by social. This is to show you how the process works, what the results are big. And one of the key things, when you're looking at maps, if you want to just change this area here, put it there, it's called a domino effect. If you change one area, that can take territory and population in, you know, it could use itself. If you have a real simple fit, you're trying to keep all of it the same size. So, and this is a blow up of urban core area, see what the current boundaries are. You try to use major roads, railroads, as much as possible, no split neighborhoods. You know, you don't wanna, you know, cold sack outfits like that. So option one, our first thing. How could we attain these goals and move the fewest number of kids possible? Always effects only one we need to. So option one will show you them. This is option one. And basically, for the most part, it takes territory and people out of Menominee, puts it in Washington. Some minor changes throughout the other schools. So basically, most of the kids that move come out of Menominee to Washington. And under this scenario, all of the elementary schools have roughly the same size of enrollment in either one of them. And we look, I know we look at, and you stay, or we're in fact, to each other for the life. Now, very important, you have a lot of inter-district transfers, and you have out-of-district transfers. In these scenarios, we just call it a libyette. So we're drawing these boundaries, the number of elementary age kids who live in these boundaries. We did not do inter-district transfers. The out-of-district transfers, we added on top, we helped that concept. But this is all driven by, this is the number of kids who live in this geographic area. Any changes in inter-district transfer will have to add as a track to that, to balance that out. The out-of-districts, you're getting twenty-eight kids in that Menominee right now, a lot of districts are safe. We're starting that forward. I think the next slide shows the again, very, very key changes through near the core area. Most of the change, adding this Menominee area down into Washington, some minor modifications. But the intent purpose of this particular option is, how can we implement this plan and move the fewest amount of kids necessary to basically repopulate Washington and give it, you know, a new base population? Number two, second option, much more radical, and that was to balance this work by overtime in that, and give the addition more flexibility on that moving out-of-district kids in different areas. So basically, it moves like three times as many kids that have this option. But if you want to keep Menominee basically a serviced area for the western part of the district, this is what it looks like. Webster to the south, Jefferson to the east and north, and Washington, suburban pools. This will also bring the transportation issue on the table. It's a different possibility, it's a different scenario. But as I say, for any theory you draw, it's gonna have positives, it's gonna have negatives. The positives of this, my last longer bit on transportation, the downside certainly is a lot of the kids. But the whole purpose is to say, okay, you can draw any boundaries you want to. What's the end result of it? How late will be your minutes, how many kids will be affected? And then the next to the slide, we can show the current four. Again, what more radical change within the urban core area, you know? This one also kind of teaches better walkability. Is that, is that something you want to move three times as many kids for? Does it benefit outweigh the cost? That would be looking at people quite, just a little thing about. Perfect scenario of a complete backside, which would have the positives and negatives. You can have to balance, which can afford better transportation, better walkability. To the kids, that's longer, there's a whole super factor. So now, the next slide, we start getting meat tables up. This is the capacity for each one of the schools. This is the code format, and this is the current utilization map. There are two types of utilization. There's a design capacity, there's an operating capacity. Okay? So if the not, okay, four hundred and fifty, it's designed for four hundred and fifty. Anybody who worked in school, run a school district, can just flat out know you can't put a kid in every seat of every classroom all day long. It just doesn't work that way. In reality, if you're going to get ninety percent of the design capacity, you're probably feeling pretty poor right now. If you're ninety-five, you probably gotta trade them off. So that's what we do, ninety percent of the design capacity is called operational capacity. That's when you really actually fully try and go into school. So for Menominee, that would take that about four or five. But we still use the design capacity for calculation. Utilization, under option one, this is the enrollment for the four elementarys. And then utilization, option number two, this is the enrollment and the utilization. Now again, when we calculate the enrollment, it's the number of kids that live in that geographic area plus the current number of students that are transferring from another district. So you can see in option one, Menominee's a little like. And option number two is much closer. There's still only about a nine percent point gap between elementary schools. This allows you to get seventy percent average here. Probably got enough room to add a section to, add in preschool, hold in preschool if you want to do daycare. Do not pack the wrap. Next slide is the main. Now, how do we get live in towns? She will go larger students, our department from she is Delaware, Ohio. That does, we take the student address file, no names, of course. And plot the map where six live and come up with accounts. And your current boundaries, this is where it gets interesting, we're reading over here, Jefferson. Hundred and twenty-six kids live in the Jefferson area and attend Jefferson School. There's two hundred and forty-eight that live in the current Jefferson area. A hundred and twenty-two of them live in Jefferson and go someplace else. Conversely, a hundred and seven live outside of Jefferson and attend, and that's Jefferson's attendance rate. Twenty-six are from out-of-district, the thirty-one from about, sixteen are from Washington. Thirty-four remain. You got kids going all over the place. You tend to focus on out-of-district, there's a hundred and twenty-three students between the four elementarys. But you've got over four hundred kids going to the elementary school outside of their assigned attendance area. None of the boundaries is a problem. That is a problem in the balance issue. Okay? And it's in every single one of them. Washington, which was originally designed to be the reciprocal of all the out-of-district transfers, only has twenty-five or a hundred and twenty-three going in. White hole system broke down, it started going all over the place. So the function of this is, if you put the kids back in their whole elementary area that we're disposed to get, it's gonna greatly reduce the transportation cost for starters. And also, it's gonna keep all of your classrooms about same size. Now, how can you go about doing that, especially for all these boundaries? We presented two options on this today. All the starting forms that you would know when, I've been doing it thirty-five years in that, and that is a no. Okay? That first map, you got it, man, this dude would do that, never happens. I'm always wrong. There's a lot of other factors to consider to, you know, I mean, walkability is one. If I'm focusing on drawing a map, the option one is, let's just move as few kids as possible and get the job done. There's probably a lot of options out there, like walkability, transportation. So even Menominee, first, nothing, nothing to flip that, you know, as much as what people like. So again, when you're looking at this, and you're trying to get modifications, if I do this, remember, you're trying to balance eight, ten, twelve different variables at a time. And whereas variable A might be the most important thing to do, variable K might be most important variable Q, you know, that that whole thing, I said, obviously, C or the variable A is not compromised, that's from the play. I think that's one of the things. It is. Okay, so anybody else?
So we're going to have a question and answer, again, your name and where you live, your address. And I could have Abby help us with the other mic. Go hold this one.
Abby, you can come around, maybe raise your hand, Abby. My name is Campbell Wardley. Want my address? One four seven zero one Dixon Lake Trail here in Plymouth. And I work for the school system as a bus driver. And my concern, and I think quite a few of our concerns is why we're here tonight, is how is this going to affect the drivers' hours and slash pay? If we take our hours away, go back to what we were, are we gonna, are we gonna be compensated that extra money? Or we would not, right?
So again, we don't have all the answers tonight. So in this one, we had a discussion, we don't know what those boundaries, where those bus routes fit in those boundaries right now. So we really can't answer that question until we have that piece of information. So
That is
That is, I understand, I do understand that it is a issue. I've had discussions with other bus drivers about that as well. And so that is something we'll, okay. If, for instance, a possibility would be if we need fewer drivers, and we could do that for attrition, for retirements and things like that, then we might be in good shape. I don't have the answer for that one, no, Ben.
I'm excited to hear your call, Heather, it's a wonderful one. One one two two seven, Sunway Drive. A lot of us parents don't have an transportation issue. We try our kids, we made our schedules, where we, that's what we do. Would we have to move out of district again, or does we do the work? And we choose to go get in our school district, not our
So at this point, nothing is all the things. So we're going to look at every possibility and try and make this as painless as we can for you parents. But also, we have some things that we have to consider for kids, like the long bus drive and some of those kinds of things. So we're gonna try and sift through all this stuff, and now we're gonna have the two different options. We can, we have a list of questions, probably longer than you do, about how they get work for her. But, I mean, I can't sit here and promise anything either. So I just, you know, we will take that into consideration though, that you know, that people that drive their own kids, we'll, you know, we'll take that into consideration as a possible solution.
I'm sure it's, raise your hand, by. My name is Carla Kelly, and I actually live in Dallas, and I transport my kids to Oklahoma. I always wanted to be at Riverside, but I can't, but my youngest wants that now. Out of addition, we have the option, or will we be placed in whatever school?
Again, we have company that determination, but both of the options that you said are possibilities. Now, and again, we'll look at all those possibilities, see what could be the best. Anyone have a question for Jerry?
Hi, my name is Michael Ferguson, I live at one one five three five Key Row. I'm wondering what this rank thing is for decisions related to all of this, was it a sport meeting, or is it something that's gonna be discussed?
We have not determined a timeline, other than we would obviously, the best scenario would be that we start this in the fall. Otherwise, we would continue the path that we've taken for the last several years. So we will try to make sure to get information up to you as quickly as possible and as often as we can, make you aware of what's going on.
Norma Rodriguez, one one seven four six one zero. So we have a lot of families that change addresses throughout the year. How is that going to affect these numbers? I mean, do we keep them where they moved to, keep them for the remainder of the year? Because that is probably what changes your numbers here.
Okay. Your inter-district mobility number, you're keeping less than five percent for you. But it does have its good point. Now, the districts and the board would have to implement a policy on that. However, the best practices, what I have seen in most school districts, that's you know, one, they give the parent the option, and they want, maybe they have siblings in schools that they want to stay in this school. They'll give them the option. Because you have a whole typically smaller urban core, you have four elementarys, most likely that would be the more urban districts that may be changed, okay? But usually you see flexibility by boards on that, because again, it depends on the number of kids and how much you're considering, just to try and flood like one school to help the number of naked. So it's of the individual cases, you can have that flexibility when you, next year you have to move school, that makes sense? So yeah, you're not, you're not the whole part, it's cool that I have, you know? You know, they, they're probably, this is what, but after you make the move, you're now in that, that other area, and that's where the delivery company, that's where the
There is a piece of paper over here on this roundtable. And it has a QR code, I believe. And it has a way to get in touch with us, so that if you don't have a question right now, or if you can't give a quick question that you wanted to ask right now, you could get one of those papers and make sure that you got your question to us so that we can answer it over the next couple of days.
Hello, my name is Sarah Holberg, I live at 185301 B Road, so I'm in the outer corner of the area. Um, I have a question about the staff members that have kids at schools. So my kids shouldn't technically go to Monomie, but since I work at Webster, they come to school with me. Is that something that is going to change, since I work there, but my kid now going to have to go to a different school?
So that, again, is another one of the things that the group of us, the administrative groups, have talked about that. We have not made a final determination on that. We, we see it both ways, you know? Um, we see it as, uh, the teacher should, or the staff member should do what everybody else does. And we also see it as, uh, the staff member should have incentive, because we're trying to incentivize teachers to, uh, stay within our school, stay with our corporation. And so we have looked at that both ways, and not made a final determination.
Sorry. So regardless, we are going to districting, it's just whether it's option A, or option one, or option two, or is that not a decision?
So like Jerry said, we're going to now, now that he has shown us all of this information, now we can start to, and, you know, try to answer some of those questions, and figure that, figure those things out. But tonight, we have not made any determination on any of those types of things.
So if a person has already signed a kindergarten up, because I know some of those forms have went out already, and picked a school, there is a possibility that they won't get that school, is that correct, or no?
What?
Not right now, all of ours.
So kindergarten enrollment is March 9, I believe. Okay, um, what is, what we're doing now is the information that any incoming kindergarten is to do enrollment, and their enrollment is based off of their current district boundary lines. We haven't done anything with referencing or placing students based off of what they, what any parent has asked. So our enrollment hasn't opened up yet for 23, 24 school year until March 9 and after. So it's only going off of our current, um, school boundary lines at this time.
Norma Rodriguez. So we have a lot of the Hispanic community here. And a lot of this is in English, I can give a basic information about this, but how can we actually inform the Hispanic community here?
I will work with you to do that, Howard, Tim. We did this the last time, we actually had a secret, a secret meeting with translators in Spanish. We're very well, I didn't put from the Hispanic community. Uh, I was just at the end of this time. Uh, while you put the, while I was using the back, well, you're just going to keep the Hispanic community. That's the deal, I have to pass that across.
Hi, my name is Ryan Carroll, I'm at 115301, I have five questions I want to ask me individually, or if you want to do all five at the same time.
All five, you first.
They're for me. Okay, um, so a little history on my kids that go to school out of districts, that would be their district. Um, at the time, we lived in Washington's district, which was project-based learning, we did not want that for our pantry. So we moved to a different school. Since then, we have moved from that location, that would have been, our home school would have been Washington. Now, our home school would be Webster, but our kids stay at Monomie, because that's where they were already established. Um, are we taking those established kids outside of those schools now, starting next year?
Yeah, we have not made that, those kind of determinations yet. I mean, one of the options that we have talked about is some kind of grandfathering and doing something over time. So it's not like just ripping off the bandage. And so that's possibly, you gotta go back now, and start talking about all of those things. That's why, uh, your five questions are really important, so we can start to understand where the public is on us. Um, so, and the story on that, it plays into your situation. We run boundaries about 10, 15 years ago, in Elton, Illinois. And so guys, oh my God, I don't want my kid going to that school, you know? So, at this stage, faith ones provide ideas out there, so we sold his house, moved and stayed in the area of the ones they had. Well, your terms are correct, options have changed, so they changed them. And if he stayed, what he was dating was an original school, he had, the way he wanted to go to, so. All time, you're a long way to go from that, and you don't want to go.
And so my daughter is a second grader, who has yet to have a normal school year. Um, how are we adjusting for those to try to have some kind of stability for those kids? Um, that are in the older generation that, um, are just now getting established, and just now finding a normal situation at school.
Well, this is, a good question, a good point, because, uh, sitting there looking at the options, I'd vote together, yeah. Option one, move as few as number of kids. Uh, option two, once it's the longest, so you probably could put that one in, if there was more kids. But you maybe have to change the boundaries, and how about 10 or 15 years, where it's number one, like five to six? So stability, one of those eight, 10, 12, 13, 14, how do you balance that in? Quite frankly, no one has state, uh, these state stability last year, four year COVID, so that may be a more important factor now.
Jerry, so I mean, you need your two, that's, that's. Um, in option one, your proposal has Monomie, which is our newest elementary school, but the lowest percentage of capacity.
Right.
Is that a strategic plan to make sure that that is a place of extra preschool and the daycare, because it has more rooms like that? Um, and how does that? I guess, why is that, that made? And is there some kind of beneficial element to the school corporation financially, um, to have those preschools and day cares in the schools?
No, 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 no. Reason why the Monomie option one is follows, because that's carried, has most, um, both different existing home sales, and has high potential increasing volume. These are purely demographic driven. These bad program transfers, I'm not trying to worry about them. I'm just, let's keep a little light, uh, that's what they are called, some homes. But 80% of your housing, 85% of your children do existing home sales, and that's what those are taking place. So if we leave a little back room there, there's a larger coast, and then, we shoot for an average of seven to 10 per year. So we're all like that. The other, we should probably come down a little bit after children come. That whole, through all boundaries, is going to last for at least one iteration of a kid that we can take to exist.
Okay, and, um, I don't know, I'm thinking of this, I'm remembering this. But, um, two-part, two-part question, you're going to.
It involves us.
Yeah, second, it involves us. Um, one is that we looked at the potential to go back to, um, Michelle at the high school. Um, because I thought initially that was a temporary thing due to COVID. And, um, what happens with, my daughter currently goes to here, with my bike in the morning, and then goes on my bus to Monomie from here. Um, is that still going to be an option for that?
So the first part of your question, Ken, do you want to take that one?
Yeah, you can do it.
Uh, the show, we don't feel like is a safe and feasible way to do that. We feel like, uh, if anything, the boundaries that Jerry's drawn, and going out to the boundaries and then coming back, eliminates the circular, uh, thing for the point I mentioned, and that could be a better option. Uh, the second part of your question?
My, my daughter comes to Lincoln right now with my bike, who works here. Gets on a bus here at Lincoln, and gets transferred to Monomie.
That will be something else that we will look at, and make sure that, uh, all those scenarios are tried to, we'll try to take those into consideration too.
If we are not able to do that, my son is in Monomie, so he will come with my bike. My daughter will be on the bus at noon, because both of us will be gone by the time the bus comes, and she will never get.
And so those are, those are the things we will, we will look at, those scenarios, and try to work through all of them.
Hi, I'm Sarah, I'm at 252710, I have a question. If they do the redistricting, and their kids are forced to go to their district schools, is Washington going to still be just strictly project-based learning?
So that's the reason that we're trying to do all four buildings stem, which is, has project-based learning with it. And so all four would be similar in that regard, so it wouldn't matter if one, you know, we wouldn't have that one, then everybody would, uh, consider a mega. Because all four would be similar.
Hi, yes, and 123714 Street. Um, so kind of thinking back, you know, that you had mentioned in your study that the Monomie fell apart. When WDA kind of said, okay, now all the schools are going to be the same, WDA is going to be the first to be more. Do we have data, why is, and not on the search of Monomie? Or are we making decisions to break up that system over there, or has it kind of been slowly tricked away?
So, um, I don't have history of that, obviously, uh, but, you know, that started, WDA started in that regard. Uh, we have governors and principals. Um, and I think over time, uh, we may not have trained them back up to the same level that the original teachers had. So I think it probably has been falling apart for years, which is the amount of students that are enrolled there has gone down.
Right, so then, my question to you about that is, why not fix the problem and get it back to where it was? And train teachers, which I know a lot of teachers there, the teachers are wonderful. I haven't had an opportunity with the newest principal yet. Um, but my son went through there, and every single year had a new principal, so now that is a problem. Uh, so maybe the issue is better leadership, and not necessarily re-destroking, and maybe we shouldn't tap into uh, ground problems instead of jumping off the cliff and making it a problem for everybody.
Look at the worst issue of the problem. If it was just singularly, we don't have enough kids to keep that program going. Um, yeah, that would be just a simple solution, that's the cause. I would, now that I would use that by thousands, so there's other factors that we can do. One of the recent focuses, 12 years ago, the boundary, was have mostly got visitor kit over the middle of the bank. That didn't work. Has had nothing to do with leadership, that was, that was permanent, that was, okay? The laws changed, the overwhelming situations changed, the funding has changed. Uh, COVID devastated the school district state. Earth's been dropping for 15 years, everything that had planned that first scenario 12 years ago has changed, okay? So you probably ought to think, this is not the only school districts, and working around the country, moving away from individual freestanding banking programs, and they're going, and going more for the equity. Uh, there was another side of the equation too. If that school was so special, we're about to make a three, four, five, six district, are we not as good or something? And there was resentment within school districts for that. And they kind of, that focus is not the best, it would be people who work for active programs for all of the districts. Machines tend to have the best success over the areas. They do not tend to work well with rural, expert, and small cities. Okay, just over the very nature. So I think districts, from, you know, last season, this school district was on the right track. What you suggest would be good, and I have to solve other problems, you know? And I don't really, this, but I'm sorry, I got to do this. Your problem is not your boundaries, your problem is margins here. You got 400, 78 kids going to school outside of the time, that's your problem. But I've been over 1500 school district, I have never seen a school district with over 20% of their kids going to schools outside of the time. That's your problem. That's the one. Everybody here is talking about this, exceptions and all this, how's it going to affect me? You're going to have to show us flexibility on this, but it's not, at all. I've also seen districts, well, when we try to accommodate everybody, we wind up chaoticness. And you slide, you're not getting more money from state of extent, you're just going to say that's the most perfect, the problem's not.
Hi, I'm Lisa, and I have a little one, 360 drive. And I hear you can talk about accessibility and all of the elementary schools, but my question is, are we there? And are we going to be there at a time that you're not going to? Yeah, I think a lot of parents in this room choose a school based on where they think their child is going to be best. And I don't agree that my child is going to go to the school that I've assigned. I would say we're damned if we get him to work in the most successful.
I, I think we're making progress, I can't say that we're going to be there. And we, we have lots of hurdles to find, obviously, uh, from what happened in COVID, all the way to, uh, just, and, you don't have teachers in the same room to, uh, train them on all of the curriculum changes and, uh, the solution tree stuff that we're doing all at once, you can't have it overnight. So is it going to be there? It's going to be a lot better next year than it was this year. And then it will be better the third year, or a year after, than it is next year. So it's, it's, you know, it's like a sliding scale, it's going to be better as time goes.
Have you done a survey of the parents who choose to go to a school outside of district for kids?
I have not done any surveys.
Um, I would, I would be, I mean, a good option to see where the, where we can go from here.
I don't disagree with them.
I mean, that's where, you know, we're, we're the people that we talk to.
Right, and that's why we're here. Hi, and I, again, I would encourage you also to get the paper, and then, uh, uh, feel free to email, uh, use that to help, and ask your questions, and we'll try to get them turned around as quickly as you can.
And, 1252710, what is the, are you planning to add more informational sections?
We would, yeah, we would like to, and we'd have to get the information up to you, that's important to us, so. I like the last question, goes back to this lead, sorry, I go right there, I want to go to school. On the outside, I have a question for Dave, if you can explain this to me. Okay, let's take Monomie for a second. You've got 100 kids that live in the Monomie district, that come, that, that live outside of Monomie, transfer in. At the same time, you've got almost 100 that live in Monomie, go someplace else. When I see numbers like that, you've got a third of the kids living in the area, going someplace else, another part is to come in. I, I don't buy this argument, well, most people's preschools, right, I don't buy it, but kids do. Why are there 100 that live in the area that go on out? I, I don't buy, I'm sorry, most people's preschools, why, why kids do, then why are there a hundred living in the area that go out? There's always things that work with it. And I think when you're engaged in this, you need great perception. Those are the issues, that's why I'm worried before I understand. You can't, but this is numbers, you can't say, well, that's a better school, that's worse, it's going all over the place. You got a big, you got a bunch of bugs, something else. That's, that's one of the questions. Why are we might be, you know, break standard program or something, might be bad school, but there's something else to play with your folks, and the community needs to pick it up and try to figure out and understand what was going on.
Jerry, I think that might be the answer that we need is, at least for my family, and if I discuss it when we first started. We lived in Washington School District, which went to project-based learning. That was not the learning environment that one of our kids did. And that's why my kids have transferred out of this. Now, we still live outside of NAMI's district, but because they were established there, that's where we stayed, because that was the option that was given to us. Um, so that's, that's our option, I think a lot of that movement necessarily, I I guess I don't know the whole details, try to figure it out, try to figure it out, but I think a lot of kids moved into Washington for that project-based learning, and a lot of kids moved out of Washington because of that project-based learning. I think that's the start of issue.
Well, I explained things, oh, we're up there. Going back, go back and forth between Jefferson and Webster, NAMI and Jefferson, all that. If all of the districts, that's one example, especially if you have all of the living here. Yeah, are you in a form of advantage?
Anna, you missed twenty-five, twenty-one, why do you have to drive? Uh, I will talk on that, so we live, um, upwards of eighteen. I have four girls. And um, we choose, well, they, we, they were going to Tabor, the third grade school, and Jefferson has preschool. And um, we transferred our oldest to Jefferson, and um, now my other three girls all went through preschool. I have two other ones that are in the preschool. And I chose to keep my oldest in Jefferson because of the diversity the school has that other schools that don't, in our area don't have. And I also teach junior achievement, and that's how the school that I teach, and I've been teaching there for about twelve years. The teachers there and how they are with their kids. And I teach that at Webster or Washington also. The structure the teachers have at Jefferson is what I want from my kids. So I have insight to other schools. And I personally, my husband and I, we chose Jefferson because I've seen it firsthand, how they deal with the kids, how their structure, and again, the diversity. And I do have a, another one, um, for the fact too, if you guys are going to redistrict, how the option two is, how are you diversifying the middle, the blue area? I mean, that's a lot of our standard calculation, I'll say it. So how are they going, how are you diversifying all schools, so all the kids can have, I mean, diversity?
Same on diversity yet now. One of the interesting things I noticed more back to this project from the last time. Um, there was a the trailer park off West Set of Teams, name of that, uh, I'll go on most of that, that was a big issue, because of the race. Um, large, spanic, large number of, of teenage kids that had come up in that split. In the run, we came back this time with that state here, it's only three hundred and teenage kids that, that transferred. And we're staying by the, first all over the city, much, much more diverse than it was, uh, two thousand and ten, concentrate. So your diversity has actually gotten a lot better, just naturally, about ten years. Another thing, what you brought up, you made the choice to go to Jefferson because of, if you lose all your points, all that. And I'm sure that worked for you. Why are there been a hundred families full of kids out there just going someplace else? And it goes back to, he had an individual reason that worked for your family. You have an individual reason that works for your family, you have an individual reason that works for your family. Okay, well, guess what? You can take into account all these individual factors, work best for you. You wind up with twenty-five, thirty-five percent of kids going to school outside of your town, saying, your reputation, but it's going to screw you. And again, go back to that thing, compromise, you're not going to get everything. And this is what happens when you just let everybody do what they want to do, you wind up with you might bust out school wrong this way. I've never seen that anywhere in this country.
Do you look at the status of each area when you do the math?
The only thing you can look at now that's better accepted is free reduced lunch rates, and that must stay within fifty percent of a district's average. And since they've raised the lower limits on their free reduced lunches now, all of your schools stay within that fifty percent bar. So now, NAMI's still going to be a little more wealthier than, say, Washington Jefferson is. That base, that you look at home price, but there's really no census level, census block level, good income data level. It's literally out of use.
Then did you add the new housing complex to the ratio as well?
Housing complex.
So the apartment now is a little bit more to do, to do cost.
Yeah, sure.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, there, there.
So, we need to wrap it up, we have time for maybe just a few more questions?
So maybe more of a comment, but a lot of what you're saying, maybe that's why we all enjoy Jefferson District, because it is unique, because we, parents know what's best for their kids, parents have been helped from now given that choice. And I think that that is something super unique about the school district. Um, I think we're able to make the best choice for our kids rather than somebody who's never met us. So you've never met my house, you don't know my children, you don't know our split house arrangement, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. All have different stories. And I think that that is what makes them unique, and you're like, well, you're the only district, I don't see, well, that's what makes us unique, and that's what we enjoy about our district, possibly.
And, and I'm not saying go to brilliant, here's your, assigned, you buy dog, you're going to build there, but have no compromise at all. That other extreme is just as bad as this extreme. You have to have flexibility, you have to have support, okay? You've got to make some, some comment. Teacher staff, that's great, I mean, yeah, if the teacher's going, teacher's nominating, she's living or he's living in the Jefferson zone, you've got to make a comment, that's, okay? Um, part of your problem is you were forced to go to the school that has programs you didn't agree with. You're being controlled with four schools, all people, I'm saying, well, get there, but that's, that's cool. That takes care of that problem, okay? But you're going to have to develop, I don't like this, I'm moving, I don't get the life one.
Well, actually, my kids won't be in the business. But my, my parents are first children, and it's a community, they not just.
This is, this is the state in Indiana, no state in the country works like this state does now. It's open enrollment, but also the open seats, no bagging. You got districts up north, you run school buses, and there are districts trying to steal kids, okay? That's, that's the way the state has set it up. You know, there's a handful of districts I've worked, but there's a blue and die by the hundred fifty kids are getting out of the neighborhood districts. So you don't like it in your district, you just go someplace else. That's what you got. Uh, hundreds of some kids transferring in, well. Uh, that's the reality of school districts in Indiana. Because they're also not giving more money, okay, we should not even build one. School districts in this state are going to be more efficient with their money. And that, that was gavel of the next hand here. And I'll close with this, because I thought it was also districts that face up to and trust these that rapid challenges now. Deal with them, we need school districts. Those, more than these issues, bear their head to stand, keep doing the best they can for the rest of the year, will be the lack of difference. Choice of districts. And if you decide to commonize work together and go for common goods, you're going to make and the register is about my way or the highway, that's all I got to say on that.
So regarding the transportation, uh, we have a lot of immigrants here in the community. And a lot of them are living right here uh, in town, so there is no transportation for them. And which causes a lot of absences in schools when, with bad weather. So you asked about why all the families are moving to different schools, you know? And that's one of the reasons, you know, because once they know they belong to Jefferson, it's like, oh my goodness, I don't know anybody here. I don't have transportation. So they would rather try to go to a different school. And that's the majority of the families up here, because they don't drive, they don't know people. When they go to work, they're carpooling with somebody else, it does have a leading role, I'm trying to discuss this. That's, that's the issue.
I kind of feel like it was already answered. Um, Gina Young, I live ninety-four hundred west town in my house. Um, I don't have kids currently in the system, so I'm going to show my age here. Back in the day, I feel like some of the pockets were moved because we did have to get that percentage with the state at each school, so that they could get the funding and the resources. So I think that's where it all started. Because I think there's a pretty picture I saw where it looks like they got all Jefferson, there's a little bright green spot. And they go to Western. And if I remember correctly, that was done. So maybe I have the wrong, there is, right there.
That's, uh,
that started, if I remember correctly, this is back at option K, last of the day, it's not then?
No, that's not why I have.
Was it just diversity as an ethnic?
Yep.
Okay.
By the way, that, that little house there, there's only twenty-one elementary kids living in that area, I'm shocked by that.
Now.
That was done, so you wouldn't have a percentage of Spanish students at Jefferson that was more than fifty percent higher than the district average, so it went down the road. That was, that was a race of the past, okay?
Yeah, I was just giving a little history, I mean, I was just like, and this is all the workouts, it'd be great.
Now, if it changed the free reduced lunch formula, that's the unintended consequence, exactly. But that was why that was put in, and it was in your memories very good, that was, okay, I'm impressed by it.
Yeah, thanks a lot, that's me, I don't want to.
That, that's why, why that was there is, and I'm going to, also allowed, uh, a little bit of that, that time, Jefferson, the new partners were coming in there and all that, they probably got that first line of plan, more east side, I don't remember that place. Real fast, that if you die. But we, we split it off, that's another one, I think, about option two, plus, there's no split areas, there's no windows. Get rid of that now, so that's one option.
One more thing, I just wanted to say that I hope that Plymouth has always done a great job making sure that all of those schools do still give all of that state funding equally. I just hope that's a priority in my new unit of minds. Have a.
So we're going to take, uh, you're welcome to come back, we thank you for coming. Uh, we're going to take a five minute break and then move on into the next part of our program. So the next part is, uh, Jill is going to lead us in the, uh, the mission condition.